I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Tuesday morning meeting, October 29th, Meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. My name is Andy Hunthausen. To my left, Commissioner Tom Rolfe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Tom's left, we have Brandy. Brandy will be taking care of us today. Thank you, Brandy. Yes, I know. I can even read her name tag there. But I don't know what happened there, Brandy. I'm sorry. But good morning to you and thank you for taking care of us. Greg McNally is next, and he is the Director of Planning and Community Development. To my right, Candace Payne, Commissioner Candace Payne, good morning. Nico Hash, Deputy County Attorney, and Roger Baltz, our Chief Administrative Officer. Good morning to all. There is a sign in sheet in the front as well as agendas. Please sign in prior to leaving today, so we have a good record of who's attended our meeting. We do not have any consent action items, Mr. Baltz. So we'll start with item number three on the agenda, which is a grant award to Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Health Resources and Services Administration. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Drenda Niemann. I am the Health Officer with Lewis and Clark Public Health. Today I have before you a grant award from the Health Services and Resources Administration. This is a federal, federal agency, HERSA, that has provided a grant that will allow us to expand our efforts in our behavioral health systems improvement work, including the leadership team and the local advisory council, to include substance use disorder work. And this work will help us to identify gaps in services and then also work collaboratively to fill those gaps in our community. The collaboration will be working in the following strategic actions over the next three years. Promoting and participating in the introduction of the new mobile behavioral health van to increase outreach to underserved communities and neighborhoods in the county. Increase services available to rural community members in their community settings. Increase the availability of medically assisted treatment services and providers able to offer the treatment. Raise awareness and availability of harm reduction solutions in the county. Improve care coordination and reduce the complications encountered by community members seeking substance use disorder services, especially when transitioning between levels of care. Support early prevention through training in schools and increasing the interaction and communication between providers. In this first year of the grant award, we were able to develop the new coalition of substance use disorder advocates and service providers. That team has grown to 13 over the course of the year, and they are integrating their work into the existing behavioral health efforts in our community. The grant award began on, let me get the dates right for you, on July 1st, 2023, and will go through June 30th of 2027. The full award from HERSA is $1,200,000 or $300,000 per year. So in consultation with grants and purchasing, I'm bringing the full award to you today instead of bringing it to you each year. So last year, it came before you for just the one-year award. Today, I'm bringing the full award so that you can approve it once and we can go about the work that happens in the next three years of the grant application or the grant award. All right. And I think that that hopefully covered all of the bases, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners?
I have questions. Um, at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned a van that could be used in various communities where they need extra assistance with their substance use issues. Could you talk about that van a little more? And how many, are we talking about communities? Only in Lewis and Clark County? Or is this one for Broadwater, Powell, and all those other weird places where sometimes you go?
Sure. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, the van is the van that we have at Lewis and Clark Public Health. It's the one that's been completely retrofitted to be a clinic inside the van. We went through a competitive RFP process in this past year and offered the subrecipient agreement to PureView Health Center. And so they are the service provider that takes the van out. And it is specific to Lewis and Clark County. So we're really focusing in on the rural areas of Lewis and Clark County, Augusta and Lincoln, Wolf Creek, and those areas specifically. There are areas that don't have access to services like those residents who live closer to Helena. And so one of the biggest goals of this funding is to make sure that services are available to individuals that live in those rural areas. So PureView Health Center does take the van and they go out in a mobile fashion to provide services in the county.
That's just amazing. Thank you.
It is amazing. Thank you. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, if I might, we have, we have some great services to help people that have addictions. And you listed medically assisted treatment. And, and I know there's some, some controversy between the idea of, of the model where people just quit cold turkey, but that doesn't work for everybody. And where could, I know we're putting up some statistics on how that works. Where can people look to, to see how these medically assisted treatments are starting to help, help folks?
Sure. That's a great question, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Rolfe. Actually, HERSA is the federal agency who provides this funding. They, they have really great information on their website that, because they've been able to collect data across the country that shows how effective these treatments can be for individuals who are suffering from substance use disorders. And so beyond what we're experiencing anecdotally, or even through data in our community, HERSA has a really great website that allows you to look at the, the evidence base behind the medically assisted treatment approach and the data associated with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Yes, and just to add on to that, I think both PureView and Helen Indian Alliance Clinic are both medically assisted treatment providers in our community and would probably now, after several years, beginning to have some pretty good statistics about helping folks and how that's gone. So anyway, we can probably find that. That might be something we can at least connect this with a few links or something that would help us look at that if you would. But this is great. Thank you very much. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing no public comment. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark Public Health from the Health Resources and Services Administration, as explained to us by Drenda Niemann.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the grant award as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is a grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Disaster and Emergency Services. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Anne McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing. Before you today is a grant award from the Montana Disaster and Emergency Services for the 2024, FY 2024, State Homeland Security Program Grant. This is a grant that comes through the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, and it's intended for local governments and other entities to bolster local security measures. The amount of the award is $121,350. There's no match requirement. It will begin on October 1, 2024, and run through September 30th of '26. Those follow the federal fiscal years. And I'll let Jenny Chambers, Director of Public Works, make some comments about the specific work to be accomplished.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jenny Chambers, Lewis and Clark County Public Works Director. So yes, this was a joint effort with our Grants Office and Public Works to, to apply for this homeland security grant. The focus really is, the goal is to improve the physical security at the courthouse campus. As you all are aware, the courthouse is a building in our building facilities complex that houses a lot of important activities within the county. And so we're always looking at what are the vulnerabilities of that facility? How can we improve physical security? And how can we mitigate potential violence or situations that might occur there? So the goal of this grant is threefold. The first is we're going to upgrade the camera system within the courthouse facility. We're going to replace the existing cameras that are HIC vision with the more stable cybersecurity technology in place, working with our IT department, as well as add additional cameras. So replace the existing cameras, but then also add other cameras. There were some areas not covered very well with our current camera security system, like the parking lot areas, some of those adjacent outside of the building. So this will provide a broader coverage of camera security. In addition, we're going to install emergency backup power for that camera system. Right now, if the power was to go out, the camera system might not operate. So it will install emergency backup for those cameras in that replacement. And then the third component is to install door alarms for the doors if they were to be opened with trigger alarmed base system, as well as glass break on the front, on the basement windows of the courthouse security. So those are the three measures that we're looking at with this grant application or grant award that we received with the ultimate goal to increase physical security of the building and mitigate any vulnerabilities at the courthouse. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. There may be some questions. Any questions, Commissioners, about, about this? Just for context sake, we've been working on this for a long time. So multiple years, not this particular grant, but this, this effort to increase security at the courthouse. And so maybe just 30 seconds, Mr. Baltz can help if you need, if you need, but just kind of the history of what we've, what we've done, why we're doing this, I guess, a little bit.
Sure. Chairman, do the best, and certainly the Roger Baltz, CAO can, can add in as well. One thing to highlight is in February 2022, we did get Department of Homeland Security, Cybersecurity, and Infrastructure Study at the courthouse. So in addition to that, prior to that, we did make some upgrades to the courthouse security with the Securitas, which is a contract for security guards at the front entrance of the building where folks come in and out. There's also a metal detector there for ensuring that folks aren't bringing weapons and stuff into the courthouse building. But then after that, after that implementation, we did do that request from the U.S. Homeland Security to have that evaluation done in 2022. That identified additional vulnerabilities. Not necessarily that we had a lot of risk. I think our courthouse is a lot more secure than others within the county or within the state. But it's a way just to increase the measures based upon those, those vulnerabilities. So these are additional measures that are taken with the alarm breaks on the glass in the basement, as well as the areas that we didn't have covered with the camera system that in combination is going to help long-term as well. So if that helps at all, I think the, the really important document was that Homeland Security Evaluation to see where we can continue to beef things up, move things forward. But there is security guards in the building during operations.
That helps a great deal. I just wanted to kind of give some context to someone who might be watching today that hadn't heard our previous meetings and knows about our, the hard work that's been going on the last couple of years. So just wanted to give a little context.
Sure.
Mr. Baltz, anything you want to add to that?
Well, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Our Public Works Director was very thorough, very good, very good summary. The only other thing I would add is just that we do have a courthouse security working team that meets on a regular basis to continue to monitor issues that may come up or may be needed. And it's comprised of appropriate staff and also has the representative from the people who actually occupy our courthouse. And so that, that's a part of our effort as well, too. And Commissioners, we, we made a decision a few years ago to implement courthouse security in terms of screening people coming in and out. And that's been, that was a big change. I think that program has gone well, but we continue to monitor it on a monthly basis through that working group as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, Chairman, thank you.
Okay. How about questions, Commissioners? Any other questions? Okay, thank you. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Disaster and Emergency Services Group, as explained by Ms. McCauley and Ms. Chambers.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the grant award as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? I just wanted to thank everyone that's working on this. Thank you, Anne. And, and Mr. Baltz, I know that the security working group meets often right across from my office. I get to say hello to them, but I appreciate the work. I know that a few years ago, there were at least, while there were several concerns brought to our attention from the judges and the staff over there, that they felt like they were pretty vulnerable and, and some of the things that we've seen across the country even that we're not immune to those things. So being prepared and having some level of security there where we're screening and trying to keep the people that work so hard for our citizens in that building safe makes sense. And then lots of citizens and jurors and all that are in there every day. So we want to make sure that they are safe as well. So I appreciate the work that's been done and looking forward to seeing the results of this, this grant, this grant funding coming through. Anything else, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Gruber Escavating. Good morning. Bless you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Before you this morning is a contract with Gruber Escavating to provide snow removal and related services within various rural improvement districts or RIDs throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises. This maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications, which was due on October 16, 2024. This type of solicitation was used with the intent to create a roster of qualified contractors to work, to work with through the 2024, excuse me, 2025 winter season. 18 statements of qualifications were received and reviewed by Public Works Department staff, excuse me, based on information included in the SOQ. We will work with each contractor to determine availability and preferred work locations to schedule that out throughout the county. Because each RID is unique, road conditions are variable, snow frequency and drifting conditions vary, we try to tailor snow removal and sanding to each district's preference while prioritizing preservation of road improvements. It's important that snow be removed regularly from roads, especially our hard surface roads, to prevent water from causing damage. Depending on the RID, property owners have very different views on when snow should be plowed. We work with property owners to identify trigger points for each district. This is the amount of snow in inches that triggers a snow plowing maintenance activity. Each district is assigned a value and contractors are given these values so that they know which districts to respond to in each storm. This helps contractors plan their day and their routes after a storm, and it also cuts down on mobilization time moving from RID to RID. This contract is one of 18 snow removal contracts that will eventually be presented to you, and it's one of six on the agenda this morning. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Gruber Escavating and authorize the chair to sign contract documents. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners, at this time? Just for those that might be watching, and this is normal operating procedure. We, county crews can't get all of the roads and streets that are in these RIDs. And so we hire or we contract with contractors to do some of these services. And the reason there's so many, and you're talking about so many, is that there's a lot of, lot of miles and a lot of mobilization. Some, well, I'll let you explain that a little bit. But why so many?
Sure.
And why isn't the county doing it? Those might be some of the questions that someone watching on TV today might have, so.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's a great question. So as, as many are aware, we have about 150 different rural improvement districts throughout the county, primarily located in the North Valley. These, these districts comprise several hundred miles of additional roadway beyond what the county is able to maintain with the county crews. So because of that, to respond in a timely manner to snow events, we rely on contractors to work in rural improvement districts, as we rely on contractors to work in rural improvement districts for almost all maintenance activities, other than sweeping and some grading potentially and other minimal activities that the road department's able to provide when they can. But the road department, especially in snow, you know, must focus on those main corridors, those main, you know,
Everybody.
Everybody roads, right? Especially, you know, these, these areas that receive high traffic when we're dealing with snow. So they have to hit those routes early. They have to hit the bus routes. They, they have to focus on those areas where the most people are driving. And then with the rural improvement district program, we're able to hire contractors to do that snow removal in those localized subdivisions or neighborhoods for folks. And this is exciting, though, to get 18. Generally, we had, I think, last year, we had about 12 contractors that were interested in doing this kind of work. So to get this many is, is good news. Our hope is that with these additional contractors coming on board, we'll be, be able to have more timely service as possible.
Yeah, that is great, because it's one of the things we hear. It's, you know, took till noon or 1:00 to get to our neighborhood. And it's like, well, we went as fast as we could with the contractors we have. But with 18, we might be more timely even and get there quickly. So that's great. Okay. Any other questions, Commissioners? Any other?
Just, Jessica, one of the questions that I've had to discuss with our constituents has to do with, why are they plowing my, that road over there, but it's noon and ours hasn't been plowed? And I tend to think we have priorities. We've got to get the school buses out, possibly the mail routes. Do you, could you talk about the priorities for us?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Payne, again, the county road department has their priority county roads, the everybody roads, you know, your Valley Drive, your Lake Helena, you know, all of those major roads that are, are connecting the county. Beyond that, they also work with the school districts each year to identify snow route, school bus routes, so that those can get done before the school buses are on the roads as well, to the best, you know, extent possible. It's really challenging. You know, it's, it's one thing when we wake up to snow and it's, it's done, but so often here, it's continuing to snow in a snow event. So that's challenging. Oftentimes with our rural improvement districts, because we have, we have limited funds, right? We have the assessments that come in as part of our budgeting process. The way we look at snow is on an average. So recognizing that we have years with heavy snow, we have years with light snow. And so what we try to do when we're budgeting how much to set aside for snow is, is look at that, kind of that average. That being said, we don't want to plow maybe every three inches. We want to often wait until that event is done. Otherwise, we're sending multiple contractors out or contractor, the same contractor out several times for the same event, and that can add up pretty quickly. So we do our best to be as efficient as possible with snow removal. And then we watch those weather reports to make sure that we're, we're trying to schedule that and communicate that back with our contractors and our constituents to make sure that we're, we're hitting that once, and maybe with a follow-up sanding as needed or, or something like that. But that, that is a challenge. I think, too, you know, even with the contractors that we have, many of these contractors have other, other work lined up. You know, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Gruber does all of the Montana City Schools before they come, they come into Lewis and Clark County. So, you know, remembering that that these folks also have other priorities is important as well. So that may be why sometimes we see work happening adjacent, but, but it hasn't quite come into the neighborhoods yet. That helps.
I'd also just like to make a comment that those of us who choose not to live within the city limits accept some responsibility. You know it's going to take a while to get those roads plowed. Let's be realistic. You want a house in the country, it has different response times than it will your little house in town.
Thanks, Commissioner. Just one other point. Really appreciate that. That was a great explanation. I think valuable for folks who might be listening. The other thing is that some streets or roads, and you could be standing somewhere and saying, why isn't this one being done and that one is, some are not in an RID or might not be eligible or might be a private road or might be something else. So there's different categories of, of roads that are eligible for these services. And if a neighborhood has formed an RID, those are the ones that are paying to have these contractors come in and do their street. So it's just for an explanation piece, that's, makes a difference.
Mr. Chair, thank you. That's, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, great. So again, this is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Gruber Escavating. Any other comments, Commissioners? How about public comment on this item? How about public comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Gruber Escavating, as explained by Jessica Makas.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? I just want to say that we have several contracts on the agenda, and all of them will be similar to this. They're all independent, and we have to take them independently, but they're very similar, similar discussion. And so the depth of discussion may be different on some of them. I just wanted to bring that point up. Anything further? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Dr. Lawn Landscape Management.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, for the record, Jessica Makas, Special District's Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Before you this morning is a contract with Dr. Lawn and Landscape Management to provide snow removal and related services within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises in rural improvement districts. Again, this maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications due on October 16, 2024, to create a roster of qualified contractors to work through the 2024-2025 winter season. Again, 18 statements of qualifications were received and reviewed by the Public Works Department staff based on that information included. I do just want to point out that we did not turn down any contractors who submitted an SOQ. We have accepted all and offered a contract to everyone, to be clear. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Dr. Lawn and Landscape Management and authorize the chair to sign contract documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Just one more opportunity to explain things. In SOQ and in that process, just a little bit, we put out, hey, who wants to snow plow this year? Here's our, here's our expectations. And they, they submit their qualifications. Can you just explain that a little bit?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, through the county, we have different options for procurement, depending on what kind of work we're looking for. For this type of work, right, we need more than one contractor to plow snow in all 150 RIDs. So with this kind of work, we're looking to build a roster. And in that case, a request for qualifications is a, is a good option for that. And then interested contractors are able to submit a statement of their qualifications. So for this particular procurement, they submitted information, they had references included, they had the, the pieces of equipment that they own. And then later on, after they were offered a contract, they're able to put in prices for that equipment, which is, is part of the contract document before you. So, so the staff are able to then review those statements of qualifications. Oftentimes, we have many contractors that we've worked with for years come in. But, but this year, we do have some new, some new contractors that were interested. We did go through a reference checking process. And with each of those new ones, we are meeting with them individually as well to just go over expectations. All of the information that was included in that RFQ, you know, is, is presented to them. But it's helpful to go through our invoicing expectations, you know, because we have so many rural improvement districts, and these contractors will be going from district to district, just how they must track their time in each district, because these are hourly rates that are charged for snow removal. And then how, all of that information that must be included on each of those invoices prior for, to, to the Public Works Department being able to sign off on those. So that information's important. So we've been going through that process as well. But, but yeah, that, that's generally how that works.
Good. I think that covers it. I really appreciate the explanation.
Yeah.
I know there are always some that are, yeah, trying to understand exactly what we're doing. So that's good.
Right. And the request for qualifications to create a roster is, is very helpful when the scope is unknown. I have no idea how much snow we're going to get this winter, who's going to need it, when.
Right.
So this on-call basis type of work is best done through this roster.
Right. Great. Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Uh, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Dr. Lawn Landscape Management, as explained by Ms. Makers.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and First Choice Lawn and Snow LLC. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Jessica Makers, Special Districts Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Before you this morning is a contract with First Choice Lawn and Snow LLC to provide snow removal and related services within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises. This maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications due on October sixteenth to create a roster of qualified contractors to work through the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five winter season. Eighteen statements of qualifications were received and reviewed by the Public Works Department staff. Staff recommend approval of the contract with First Choice Lawn and Snow LLC and authorize the chair to sign contract documents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions on this contract? Any questions? Okay, how about public comment? Public comment? Again, this contract is a different contractor, but very similar to the last two that we've just discussed. Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and First Choice Lawn and the Snow LLC as presented by Jessica Makers.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion, commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is another contract between Lewis and Clark County and Haggast, Haggast?
Hegaset.
Hegaset. Oh, Hegaset. Yeah, there's a set part. Hegaset Water Systems. Thank you for the help with the pronunciation. Please.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jessica Makers, Special Districts Program Coordinator. For you this morning is a contract with Hegaset Water Systems to provide snow removal and related services within various RIDs throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises. This maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications due on October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, to create a roster of qualified contractors to work through the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five winter season. Eighteen statements of qualifications were received and reviewed by Public, Public Works Department staff. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Hegaset Water Systems and authorize the chair to sign contract documents.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions? How about public comment on this contract? Any public con, comment? Any public comment? Hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Hegaset Water Systems, as explained by Ms. Makers.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion, commissioners? Again, thank you. This is very similar to the last. Several have done. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Rocky Mountain Operations LLC. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Jessica Makers, Special Districts Program Coordinator. Before you this morning is a contract with Rocky Mountain Operations LLC to provide snow removal and related services within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for this maintenance arises in RIDs. This maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications due on October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, to create a roster of qualified contractors to work through the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five winter season. Again, eighteen statements of qualifications were received and reviewed by Public Works Department staff. Staff recommend approval of the contract with Rocky Mountain Operations LLC and authorize the chair to sign contract documents. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions on this contract? How about public comment? Any public comment related to this item? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Rocky Mountain Operations LLC, as, uh, explained by Jessica Makers.
Second.
Second, yes. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Any further discussion, commissioners? Again, thank you. I, one thing I might point out and maybe, uh, explain this is that, uh, another benefit of having so many is that we have a very large valet valley and, and like you said, over a hundred, a hundred and fifty-ish, uh, rural improvement districts. And, uh, some of these folks may be located on one side of the valley or whatever. And so, uh, having them be respond, I guess, in an area that is, uh, more realistic than taking all of their equipment all the way across the valley where maybe someone is closer over there. So it, it gives us that, a little bit of that flexibility to respond, uh, more efficiently.
Mr. Chair, that's absolutely right. And, and again, um, with the kind of development last year of these trigger points that I, that I talked about, you know, each of these contractors, right, is assigned an area where they're working in. But two, you know, they're able to watch that weather report too. They know we're scheduled for, let's say, four to six inches. They wake up in the morning, you know, they know what they have. The other part of that, right, is that the valley experience is very different snowfall from one area to the next. So that bird's eye corridor often gets a lot of snow, gets a lot of drifting, you know, that, that might need work, but maybe our, our, um, districts, you know, north of East Helena have a dusting or something to that effect. So having those contractors respond to those different areas really helps us, you know, manage that response time. And, and hopefully it also helps those contractors kind of know what they're in for, for the next day, if you will.
Right. Thank you. And commissioners, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. I kind of interrupted our normal process by asking a question there, but any further discussion or any, anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Sussex Construction. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my name is Jessica Makers, Special Districts Coordinator for Lewis and Clark County. Uh, this is the last one. Uh, before you this morning is a contract with Sussex Construction to provide snow removal and related services within various rural improvement districts throughout Lewis and Clark County. Work under this contract will be completed on an on-call basis as the need for the maintenance arises in rural improvement districts. Again, this maintenance was solicited through a request for qualifications. It was due on October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, to create a roster of qualified contractors to work through the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five winter season. Eighteen statements of qualifications were received and reviewed by Public Works Department staff. Um, staff recommend approval of the contract with Sussex Construction and authorize the chair to sign contract documents. And I will just say that while we're done for this morning, these six have been presented. We have twelve more coming in the future. So, so we'll, we'll be back.
Be prepared.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, how about questions about this contract? Any question? How about public comment? Any public comment on this contract? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would, uh, move to approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Sussex Construction, as explained by Ms. Makers.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion. Uh, Jessica, just thank you for the explanations and putting up with the, all of the, all of the requests for further explanation anyway. Thank you. Commissioners, anything else?
I'd just like to comment that I really appreciate the fact that we're, our county is being prepared. We know winter's coming and the folks out there in the Public Works Department, um, they're getting us all ready for action. So I appreciate that.
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Okay, we are on to, uh, contract amendment between Lewis and Clark County and Great Western Recreation. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Angie Hubbard, Planner for Lewis and Clark County Community Development and Planning. You have before you today a contract amendment to extend the period of performance from October thirty first, twenty twenty four to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The contract is with Great, Great Western Recreation for the purchase and installation of playground equipment at Treasure State Acres Park. The funding for this playground equipment is provided from Treasure State Acres Park District Fund, Treasure State Acres Homeowners Association, a grant from the City County Parks Board, provided from the cash and loo dollars collected during subdivision review, and a donation from the Helena Youth Lacrosse. Treasure State Acres Park is an eight-acre county-owned parkland located within Treasure State Acres subdivision, east of North Montana and adjacent to Wolverine Drive. The project includes removal of the concrete and existing playground equipment, except the slide, a removal of the gravel base and replacement with engineered wood fiber, installation of a swing set with adaptive chair, play panels, balancing beams, and a picnic table and two benches. The original contract was signed by the commission on August twentieth, twenty twenty four. This amendment is for the period of performance only, which extends the contract out from October thirty first, twenty twenty four to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. The contract amendment has been fully executed by Great Western Recreation and staff recommends approval.
So they just needed a little more time?
Yes.
Another month. Get it done.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's correct.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions regarding this? This is just an extension of time to finish the job. All right. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion?
Mr., Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract amendment between Lewis and Clark County and Great Western Recreation, as, um, explained by Planner Angie Hubbard.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract amendment as presented. Further discussion.
Just, you know, a month between October thirtieth and November thirtieth. I can just see all kinds of weather-related issues in installing, um, playground equipment during that thirty-day period. I, I hope they get the work done during their immediate windows of opportunity because we know what's going to hap, or could happen. Maybe it'll be open, but just.
I bet we can pause for an explanation if you want.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, um, I had that very same concern. And, um, Great Western Recreation has assured me that they install playground equipment during all kinds of weather all the time. So I will be on them, though, to get this done in a timely fashion.
Well, I'm hopeful they get it done as well. Um, I, I guess, uh, we don't want to do this, but I guess if worse came to worse, we could always be back here to extend the contract further if needed, but I hope that's not the case. I'm, I'm assuming they, they know what they're doing and thirty days will be, approximately thirty days will be enough to finish the job.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, yes, I hope so too, and I will be monitoring to see if we need that extension.
Great. And just again, for, for the public interest, this has been, uh, well, it's been a couple of years project to get it off the ground and contracted and all of that and the plan done. Uh, so kudos to the folks there in Treasure State Acres who have been behind this and organized themselves to replace the, the playground equipment and, and funded most of it, uh, on their own, uh, with some help from the cash and loo funds. But, uh, overall, it, it's their doing and with your help, and I appreciate all the work you've done with them to help keep them on track.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions, commissioners? We do have a motion and a second on the table, on the floor, if you will. Anything further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. Thanks, Angie. All right, next item on the agenda is a statement of work between Lewis and Clark County and CDW Government LLC. Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. My name is James Thomas. I am the City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County IT Director. Before you this morning is a contract for professional services between Lewis and Clark County and CDW Government. This contract will allow CDW to provide a senior technical architect, as well as a project manager, to assist our internal staff with deploying new network devices as part of our network modernization project. This contract has been reviewed and approved by both county procurement and the county attorney's office. This contract is part of the Sourcewell Contracting Agreement for local governments. CDW has offered to provide five thousand dollar discount, bringing our estimate, estimated cost down from twenty four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars to nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. Staff recommends approval of the contract with an estimated cost of nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and authorize the chair to sign.
Thank you. Questions, commissioners? Mr. Thomas, just an opportunity here, uh, to, again, explain to those that might be watching or listening, uh, today about our, our modern, modern, modernization project. Just kind of give us a ten thousand-foot overview of what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how it impacts the, the services that the county can provide.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Um, part of the network modernization project that we are undertaking is to upgrade the internal network switching environment across the entire organization. So this will encompass all thirty-seven buildings. We're replacing all the networking equipment in all of those buildings. We will be bringing us forward in the technological era. Um, some of the equipment has aged well beyond the lifespan, dating all the way back to, I believe, our oldest that we found is about two thousand and five. So we're bringing everything up to a current platform. Uh, the anticipation is that we will have an easier support arena because it's all standardized. And so rather than trying to remember how to do things from two thousand and five to current, we will be working on the same architecture of the equipment, um, so that it's all in the, in the same realm, the same era.
Great. Thank you. Important. Please, Commissioner Payne.
Just sort of clarification. I, you are the IT guru for both the city and the county. And I know we share a lot of various infrastructure with the city. Probably these thirty-seven buildings is a good part of them the city uses too. Are, is, are they having the same upgrades to their IT system at this time?
Uh, Chairman, Commissioner Payne, that is correct. We will cover all the buildings for both the city and the county since we support the entire organization. Basically, it, whether it's county building or a city building or co, cohabitated, such as city-county building, we will replace all of that equipment.
Okay, is, and one more question. Is the city helping us fund this or is it strictly county?
Uh, Chairman, Commissioner Payne, uh, this funding comes out of the IT budget, which is a shared budget between both city and county.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, so good questions, Commissioner. And, um, along, along those lines, um, it is one IT system, city and county system, so we're all together. And it is funded by both, as you said, uh, the, the IT budget, which is funded city and county. And, um, a good part of, good chunk of that is based on users and, and, uh, how, how many folks we have out there using the system, right? And I mean, did maybe just a brief explanation about how it works a little bit.
Uh, Chairman, uh, that is correct. We work together with both the city finance and county finance officers to make sure that we fairly allocate the funding or, or receive the funding based on the number of users from the city and.
Much better said than I was trying to stumble into there. So thank you very much. Any other questions about this? Okay, thank you. Uh, how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Public comment? Seeing no public comment, commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Um, Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the statement of work between Lewis and Clark County and, and CDW Government LLC, as explained by Mr. Thomas.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the statement of work as presented. Further discussion, commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I think, uh, I just want to commend, um, our, um, IT department, that is joint, jointly takes care of the city and the county for the great job that you're doing. The way you have saved money for the, for both of it, both the city and. The way you have saved money for the, for both of it, both the city and, and the county with your efficient use of resources and people and, and your diligence in, in trying to get the biggest bang for the buck. So thank you very much.
Chairman, Commissioner, thank you.
I would share in that. Just much appreciation for the work that you do. And it's challenging because you work on a tight budget. You work with a lot of demands, a lot of pressure. People want to turn on their stuff and have it work. And so I, I, I I don't understand it all, but I can imagine, you know, trying to replace all this stuff and modernize the system and have it working all day 24/7 so people can be on there. They don't even know that they're getting upgraded. I think about, you know, the whole analogy of trying to build a plane as it's flying. So you got a plane flying and now, well, while, while we're in the air, we gotta replace an engine or replace this computer or whatever that's in this system. And so I don't know how you do it, but every day I come, the thing comes on and it works. And I know that in the background, there's lots going on and I just appreciate you and your team. Thank you very much for the work you do.
Chairman, thank you.
Commissioners, anything further? All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Next item on the agenda is a memorandum of agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff's Employees Association. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Carrie DeRozier. I'm the Human Resources Director for Lewis and Clark County. Before you this morning is a memorandum of agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff Employees Association regarding staffing levels for the night shift at the detention center. Currently, Article 11 of the collective bargaining agreement states how many officers will be scheduled for each shift. When the staff levels are considered sufficient, which means a minimum of 55 employees, the sheriff will schedule nine detention officers per shift. If staff levels are below that, the sheriff will schedule seven officers. What has been added to this provision is that if the officer in charge deems it acceptable, they will have the option to run the grave shift with six detention officers. This change has been agreed to by the association and the sheriff, and staff recommends your approval.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions? Please, Commissioners.
Carrie, I have some real concerns about the detention center and the safety of not only our employees who work there, but our guests, the people who are, they may be not regular members of society because they've done bad things, but they are still our, our sons and daughters, our, our brothers, fathers, mother. Okay. So somebody loves these people. If we don't have enough staff to take care of them and an emergency comes up and we end up with somebody, say they commit suicide because there wasn't somebody paying close enough attention, is that factored into the, the numbers of people that are working? The, the detention officers that are working to keep, keep safety in mind, not only for our employees, but for our guests?
I wasn't directly involved in the conversations, but I know that during collective bargaining negotiations, safety is a factor for the inmates and for the officers. And a large majority of the discussion here was people covered under the collective bargaining agreement. So they're the one, they're the, be the ones making the decision on whether to go down to six for that one shift or not. I do know that the shift that they're talking about, there's less activity going on and
What activity?
Meaning they're sleeping a majority of the time. So there's not like court appearances, there's not transportation, there's not a lot of meal, there's not the med distribution. So there's a little bit less going on and greater ability for monitoring going on.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, for your questions. Any other question? Carrie, just a couple of things, just for those that might be watching. Our, our negotiations with the, with the Sheriff's Union Employees Association, it's one of, how many unions do we have? Five?
We have four.
Four unions. And so the negotiations and ongoing contractual efforts to make sure that we're on the same page are ongoing and, and those contracts come open every so often. I just, I guess it's an explanation to how it works, kind of. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So for this collective bargain agreement, it's a two-year term. Most of the agreements that we have are two years. And we do, we have the ability to open them every year or at any time. But we negotiate this one every two years and we'll be opening this one again in March to be settled hopefully before the start of the fiscal year. But we, officer safety has been a large discussion, you know, over the course of time. So those things are kind of talked about throughout those discussions.
And we've had a significant challenge trying to get fully staffed across the county, but this is one of the areas where full staffing has been pretty challenging with the number of detention officers that we have.
It has been very challenging, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Okay. So, and the other thing, and this may not be something that you're familiar with, but I know that there are jail standards out there, and I think that our sheriff's office has committed to try and meet those best that they can. And so they're working with some standards for the numbers of folks to have on shifts and things, depending on the number of people and, and the shape, size, and arrangement of the facility. So there is some work. I know that Montana Association of Counties provides some opportunity for consulting in terms of how things work and how things should run in the detention center. So all of that's, I think, factored into some of these equations. And I just appreciate the work that you and your staff are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other question? How about public comment on this item? Public comment on this item? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion, please, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the Lewis and Clark County Sheriff Employees Association as presented by Carrie DeRozier.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded to approve the memorandum of agreement as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We're on to the next item on the agenda, which is board appointments, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Baltz for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is item number 14 on the agenda for you today for your consideration. Commissioners, you have as the backup information, the memo that was prepared by Brandy Spangler. I will read it into the record. And, Mr. Chair, if agreeable to you, as we've been doing, we take them one at a time.
You bet.
These candidates meet the qualifications for consideration of each board. The first one is the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District. With apologies on pronunciations here if I get them wrong. Patrick Keem, Keim term will expire October 31, 2024. He does not wish reappointment. Kathy Moore applied. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicant and select the candidate for Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District to a term that begins November 1, 2024, and will expire October 31, 2027.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? How about public comment on this proposed appointment to the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District Board? Any public comment? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the board appointment to Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District as explained by Roger Balls.
Should we name the individual?
Kathy Moore.
Kathy Moore.
Second, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, to appoint Kathy Moore to the Solid Waste, Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District Board. Commissioners, discussion or comment?
I'd just like to make a comment. I've, I've known Pat Keim for about as long as I've lived in Helena, and he, he is always providing service to his community. He works with the Volunteer Fire Department. He, he is active in so many things. So Kathy Moore is going to have big shoes to fill. And I wish her the best of luck.
Thank you.
Yes, and, and I just would like to add that as, as well. Mr. Keim's service to our community has been a long period of time and very dedicated in many ways, from fire department to the symphony. I think he served as for a while as chairman of the Board of Directors at the symphony and, and, and also on, on this Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District. And there's probably several others I'm not, not aware of. So but he has, he has dedicated his life to public service and I appreciate it very much.
Yes, he has. I can't say it any better than the two of you have. Thank you very much for, for doing that. The one comment I will make, and Brandy can nod her head for me if she would like, but all of these applicants for these positions have been vetted for their eligibility for serving on these boards. So that, just wanted to affirm that. So Commissioners, there's a motion and a second to appoint Kathy Moore to the Scratch Gravel Solid Waste District Board. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Mr. Baltz, next?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The next item is for the Water Quality Protection District. Jonathan Staldeen resigned September 5, 2024. Patty Hamblock and Adele Johnson applied. Action staff recommends that the Commissioners consider the applicants and select a candidate for the Water Quality Protection District to a partial term that will expire June 30, 2026.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? We do have our Water Quality Protection District Lead in the room today. If there's any questions about the district or what their needs are.
Mr. Chairman, I, I sit on this board and I, I think it's a, a really important part of our community. Nobody really even thinks about the quality of water when you're, you just turn on the faucet and the water comes out, right? There's more to it than that. And it's, it's a very interesting committee to sit on. I have reviewed the applications and I don't, I don't personally know either of the people, but it looks to me that Adele Johnson is possibly on this paper that we have, has the best experience to be, to be some help on this particular committee. Just my opinion.
Mr. Chair, I, I think they're both have great qualifications. I happen to know Adele. She's a member of the Toastmasters Club that I belong to. And I think she would work hard and be very dedicated doing the good work for us.
Okay. Thank you very much. How about any public comment on this? Any public comment? All right. Commissioners, how about a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve, to appoint Adele Johnson to the Water Quality Protection District Board.
Second.
Moved and seconded to appoint Adele Johnson to the Water Quality Protection District Board. Further discussion, Commissioners? I'll just state that we often, well, yeah, I guess often is a good, good way to describe that. We often have more than one candidate applying for some of these boards and committees. And what we try to do is keep the person or persons that did not get appointed on our list in reserve. And if another seat comes open, we then invite them or ask them if they're still interested in being appointed and we will reconsider them for the next appointment. So I hope that in this case, if, if this motion is approved, that Patty Hamblock will consider a future, future board appointment. Thank you. All right. Anything else, Commissioners? It's moved and seconded to appoint Adele Johnson. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. We are at that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the Commission, but not on today's agenda. Welcome. Please come up to the microphone, introduce yourself for the record. And you have the floor. Good morning. Welcome. Is the green light on there? Make sure the green light's on. There you go. Green light is on.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Wallace. I live at 2074 Scott Drive in Helena. And I'm here on behalf of the League of Women Voters. You may have received a letter recently that we've established an observer corps of people who will come, league members who will attend commission meetings, both county and city, as well as the school board. And so I'm one of three who have volunteered to sit in and listen in. Sometimes we'll be here physically. Sometimes I don't know that you do Zoom meetings, but you do.
It is live on TV, though. Yeah.
It's live on TV. Right. So you may see us present or you may not. But we will be reporting back to our membership about issues that are relevant to our goals, which are open government and election fairness and nonpartisan kinds of things like that. And we also have positions on growth, on water quality. Seems like there's one other tax reform. That was the other one. And so we're, we're not here to criticize. We're just here to observe the ability of the public to participate in government, to understand what you're doing. And I really appreciate some of the questions that you all ask that then in the recorded minutes, people can understand some of the background of the decisions you're making. That's very helpful. And so that's, I'm just here to introduce myself and that's, that's it. I appreciate very much the ability to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for being here today. Appreciate it very much. Okay. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Commissioners, I thank you very much for a good meeting. We will stand adjourned.